And now, a workshop of the McAllen City Commission. All workshops are open to the public in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. These workshops allow for detailed staff presentations.
Want to call this workshop for Tuesday, May 27th to order is 4:02 PM. First item on the agenda, does anyone have any questions to staff regarding the regular agenda?
No questions, Mayor Protem.
No question, Mayor Protem.
Dr. Met, City Manager?
Okay, Mayor Protem, we have for you an update on the airport terminal expansion project. We just wanted to review how we intend to procure the design element of that project. So we have Jeremy Sonasboy from the airport here to present for you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Commission. As we continue to invest in our airport, we're looking at the expansion which we just, last commission meeting approved the design contract. In addition to the design contract, we're looking at the C Mar approach which we had indicated through the study on how we would procure a project of this size. And so just to kind of go over the big picture, we're adding ticket counters, adding baggage facility, adding admin areas, TSA screening areas, renovating the TSA areas as well, enhancing the entry areas into the terminal, adding four more gates, and then renovating the federal inspection station.
What about bathrooms?
Adding restrooms as well, yes, sir. Pre-security and post-security, yes. Yes, we definitely need those. And so looking at the overall budget and the different funding sources that we're looking at, we continue to look at new funding sources on how we award and how we use part of these funding sources to build the expansion and continue to invest in the airport. Right now, we're looking at about a total of 193 million, which includes soft costs, design, construction management, construction materials, testings, and whatnot. And you can see kind of the way it's distributed currently, but we'll be working on that to add more columns on there on additional funding sources. On the timeline, it's about a two-year project currently, so we started that already. The RFQ for the construction manager at risk proposals are, should be out in the streets. We've coordinated with purchasing, so hopefully we'll have these, those within about a month or so, so we're probably looking at awarding a contract sometime in July. And so just using the construction manager at risk, the benefits of doing that is that you have the construction manager early in the project. Because of the size of the project and the complexity, using that RFQ process, you're not only looking at price, but you're also looking at the qualifications, which includes the phasing, value engineering, cost estimation, and design alternatives. These projects, large projects are schedule sensitive, and they're always difficult to define just because of the funding sources, and the funding sources have become available, especially the way the feds are, come out with, with funding. But the big thing is the, the risk is on the contractor for that guaranteed maximum price. That GMP provides the budget framework if we're to incur debt for this infrastructure. And so just looking at big picture, the phasing and staging are going to be real important throughout the project to keep the existing operation going. Having the contractor, you know, having that airport experience, understanding all the rules with the FAA, operating rules with tenants, all the requirements to maintain that operating certificate from the FAA, and security with TSA are very important. And again, you know, the, the bulk of the project, the cost estimating, the design reviews, the value engineering, and of course, the GMP. There you have some, some different reasons why the C Mar is the way to go with respect to the competitive sealed bids, which is typically the, the way most projects are funded. And really, it's potential for the cost savings, the time savings, and having the contractor in early on the project is very key to this delivery message. And so just, you know, the C Mar creates the opportunity to hire that experienced team member to be able to deliver the project, manage the budget process to help us with that backstop when we are incurring some debt, and then the time savings on the schedule. We're about two years behind on this project. We've outlived the current terminal as it is back a few years ago, and as we continue to grow, we continue to feel that pinch. So that is the update on the C Mar approach for the project.
Just to clarify the record, we're not technically behind on the project, we're probably behind on timing to implement the project. We haven't started the project yet, so we can't be behind.
Our pace of, of development has, the growth has outpaced the development of the project. So.
One of the reasons we wanted to bring this to your attention is this will be our first real opportunity to use C Mar on a, on a project of a very large scale. I know that, I think, with the exception of Commissioner Rios, you were all here to see the surprises we got when the Anzaldules bids came in, and Quinta bids came in. We tried our best to morph Quinta to a C Mar style project, but having construction, construction drawings at 100% really didn't give us an opportunity to use the value of having the construction manager on the project to provide input to the design team so we could maximize the efficient, efficiency in materials and, and cost through that process. So Jeremy and I have talked a lot about whether this was an appropriate project for that approach, and I think we both agree that it is. But again, since this will be the, the commission's first real-time at using this procurement method, we wanted to make sure we brought it back to you and give you an opportunity to ask any questions you might have about it as we move forward.
Refresh my memory, if in fact, the total cost of construction and hours, it works out to be less than what the projected ultimate turnkey price was, is that money they keep? Right? No?
We pay the price of the project.
Oh, that's it? So they're able to, I don't want to say cut corners, but maybe get some better pricing on materials or submange or whatever it is, then that's their win?
No, we, we can negotiate that in the contract, Commissioner. Where, where we will see the benefit is when we get to that 60 to 70% design, the contractor at that point will tell us, this is where we think this project comes in, this is the guaranteed maximum price it will cost you to build this project. They are at risk beyond that point, so if the project goes over, the contractor bears that cost.
And if the project goes under?
I think that's what, what we can negotiate. So I think on Quinta, there was negotiated into that contract, some of that money going back to the contractor, and so incentive to save. But that, that's up for negotiation.
Very well, thank you.
I'd like to also add that the FAA has just approved this delivery method as well. We had to get their approval because it's not a typical design bid build type of project.
Jeremy, as, as the airport expand and grows, we've done studies for traffic too? Or not yet? Like for the parking, because you know, overflow parking and?
Yes, sir. If you, if you recall, we're, we're in the design process of adding two more lots, one lot across the street, and then the lot there in front of the taxi area.
Perfect.
We're adding about 270 spaces.
Space, awesome.
And of course, that still comes out a lot less expensive than trying to do a multi-level parking.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yes, Commissioner.
And when is that, what's the timeline for that?
In a few weeks, we're due, design development set, so we should be able to turn that around, hopefully by the end of the calendar year.
The short-term parking, you know, how many, how many spaces do we have in short-term?
I want to say it's about almost 200 spaces.
And the use, is a constant overflow of use there or not?
Yes, sir. What we're doing is we're going to collect data for about a year. After the year turns over, we're going to make adjustments, some, some physical adjustments as needed based off the data.
Well, the reason why I'm saying is because it, because there's so many flights coming in, and there, you know, we only have two luggage, whatever.
Carousel.
Areas.
Carousel.
Sometimes they're taking a little longer, and it's affecting the short-term parking. By the time they get to the, to pay, and because we have a new system, then it goes over the 30-minute limit. So it might be, maybe, maybe we need to have a gracious, a grace period of additional minutes while we go through this transition and growth.
Oh, during, during the possible construction of the, because I know we said, we had approved updated timeframes and, and cost basis just a few months ago.
Yeah, we, we. I don't, I don't recall it, so maybe I missed that.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, we had a thorough discussion about the problems with short-term, and we came up with one solution, or it was discovered through some of the data that it was like people picking up their relatives, and they were using the short-term lot, and so it was occupying spaces at peak times.
That's right.
To kind of deter that activity and kind of be able to park across the street at the mall or at the hotel, wait for them to call, and then when they're ready to pick up, to pull up as opposed to using up that spot. And I think what ended up is that you ended up freeing up a lot of spots in short-term, and of course, you still had the long-term and then the overflow lot as a, as a backup. But that was addressed, and it's quite possible, you missed out on that workshop bit, but we had discussed that pretty thoroughly. And we also changed the pricing structure.
What was the results out of that discussion?
We had about 80% of the traffic going in and out of the parking lot was staying for zero to two hours, which means a lot of them were meters and greeters, so we changed the rates. We still have the free on both lots, 30 minutes free.
30 minute, right?
30 minutes.
30 minute window.
Which was, I believe, in comparison, we were either comparable or generally below most of the airports or parking lots that we compared to.
Still, still are, yes, sir.
We still are.
And how are we doing with the, the new pay system?
It's.
It's been around like 30 days or something like that, or what is it?
Almost two months. We've had a lot of compliments, and then we've had some hiccups to work through.
I did fly in yesterday, and they had two people attending each site, very proactive, attending each vehicle, so obviously they've, they've taken on some investment in, in training and getting the public up to speed, but they seem to be moving vehicles pretty good, because I know they were explaining to everyone how to use it.
Yeah, they're, they're doing that, and then they also have staff walking the parking lots, trying to meet people as they're coming out of the terminal to help them get ahead of using the.
The QR code.
QR code pay system to try to expedite that process. So they're, they're, they've been pretty responsive to our requests.
They were doing a very good job yesterday, I'll give them that nod.
Glad to hear that.
On the same, or similar vein, why is the, I guess, the lane to the credit card only lane blocked off, that you can't make that left and then go down the parking area?
They were having a lot of trouble with cars trying to, to cut in, and so they kind of, they, they closed that, they recommended to close that one to push them out to the other, to that credit card only lane on the west side.
You got to do it a little earlier to make that left, go all the way around.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
But is there, whenever they get trapped in there?
There's, there's a way to, to come back around.
Yeah. There's a, there's actually an entrance also, if you go past it, there's an entrance on the other side.
I mean, just keep monitoring it and do the best we can, because we have had some complaints the other way, that it's just taking a little too long, and by the time they get there, waiting around five or six or 10 people that don't know how to use it or something, their, their time ran out, and they were charged. It happens. It happens.
It's not necessarily the topic, but Commissioner Geter brought it up. Do you all get data on the time from when deployment starts to when bags get to the?
The carousel?
The carousel per airline? Is that type of data even measured or available? Because I would, I would say that, I think there's a perception, sometimes it takes longer than it is, but the walk from the gates to the carousel is very, very short. Because you're not walking a Houston or Dallas terminal, right? So I'm, I would, I think, you know, I would wonder if, if they really do take longer than a regu, a regular airport, right? Or whatever you want to say is a regular airport.
Yeah, a larger airport, you're walking before you get to the gate.
That's right.
To the terminal.
The airlines typically take to account those metrics to get, you know, the passengers or bags and things like that, and it's, it's more on the airlines. When we get complaints, then we'll kind of audit it and check on that, and then communicate that with the, with the airlines.
Okay.
But, but you're correct in the respect that, you know, it's such a short walk.
Yeah.
You know, you go to Vegas, it takes you.
Gives the impression you're waiting longer.
That's correct, Commissioner.
I'll give you one example, when I fly to Austin, on Delta, Delta's on the very far eastern side of the terminal, gates, you know, one through 10. It took a good solid 10, 12, 15-minute walk, and of course, every time I get to the carousel, right, sweetheart, our bag has been there, it's been going around at least once or twice, so you're, you're using a lot of time just walking it all the way back to the main area and then get out, and you made a very valid point, I mean, we're very blessed, I guess, lucky, it's a very short walk, you know, from our, from our jet bridges.
Thank you.
So all this, all this will be done by 2029?
That's the, that's the aiming point.
Real quick, on, on the funding from the tenants, I know we expect funding from the tenants, but existing tenants, future tenants, how does that bulk of funding just appear?
It's, it's built out, and so a lot of these spaces, concessionaire spaces, will work through the RFPs that we do, just like we did with this last food and beverage where the, the concessionaire paid about 1.1 million in improvements themselves, and so that's what we're bringing in, that's what we're showing.
Let's be good, let's be fair, and let's be productive, because we need, we need activity in that, both the, the commercial airlines and also the private airlines. It's good for, it's good for, it's good for McAllen.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy. Mayor Protem, the commission asked for an update on the citywide Wi-Fi, and so we have Robert Acosta, IT Director, here to provide you that update.
Good afternoon, thank you all.
Robert, you can just talk into the microphone. Thank you.
I'm Robert Acosta, Director of IT. What I'd like to do is start off by giving you all a little history of how citywide Wi-Fi came to fruition. I believe we have a couple of new commissioners and even a mayor since then, so what I'd like to give you a little update. During the COVID pandemic, sheltering at home really impacted remote learning for students. We identified about 18,000 students that didn't have the resources, internet access to be able to do remote learning from home, so the commission approved that the city turned around and install Wi-Fi throughout the neighborhoods. It was a best effort. We targeted the light poles within subdivisions to get access to residential homes. So we targeted underserved neighborhoods that one didn't even have internet access available through Spectrum, Time Warner, those type of companies, AT&amp;T, or the people within those neighborhoods just didn't have the money to afford internet. Out of 18,214 students that McAllen I S D identified that did not have access to internet, after we installed it, we covered about 10,000 of those students that were living within the, the Wi-Fi coverage area. It took 76 days, we were in a hurry when we, when we deployed this, because we needed to meet the timeline to complete it in order to get reimbursement from, I can't remember the funding source's name. I think, yeah, I think it was, yeah, it was from, we did, we completed it, start to finish, it took 76 days, we spent 3.1 million, and we finished in October of 2020. Again, we utilized, we installed about 1,000 light poles in different residential areas, and after we did that, Dr. Gonzalez from McAllen I S D definitely saw a huge increase in, in remote learning from, from the students, so very positive. Here's just a little coverage area of how we deployed, or where we deployed Wi-Fi to by district, this is the old district, I believe we've modified one or two districts since then, but our target, our target areas, what, what we did to validate target areas is we started with the median household income, starting at 50,000 or less, 60,000 or less, and we kept moving to neighborhoods for the, the students in that area where their, their household income met that, that threshold. Once we exhausted all those thresholds, then we started looking at the actual values of the property in the neighborhoods, and it was, we started with anything property that was 150,000 or less. Once we exhausted that, if we still had equipment left over, because we bought 1,000 of these light poles, equipment, then we started looking at any available pole that we could mount it on. And so that was kind of, I, I know you can see here the coverages, for example, District, District One has 4,900 houses, we covered about 2,100, about 44% of the houses in that area. So just, just a little overview.
Robert, on, on, well, obviously District Two, why the disparity? In terms of like, the number of properties in the coverage area?
Yes, sir.
Versus the, the total number of properties under?
And it kind of, I'll give you, I'll show you why, we, we try to target, let me see if I can pull it up here. It's not coming up, is it? Yeah, there it goes, coming up. We, we try to target these type of poles, the, the concrete or the wood poles, probably hard to see, they're the thicker poles, you know, I think I have a better picture, hold on, right here. Here, see the, this, this type of pole?
Right.
We, we try to target these type of poles that can hold the weight of the equipment, because it's, you ever heard of DirecTV or Dish? We have those satellite dishes that are on them, where the poles in your district, let me see if I can pull them up, here's an example. No, not that one, this one. Here's an example, this, these, we can install it on these power lines, AEP won't let us, and, and these type of poles, and, and this is at Buddy Owen, and, so a lot of, a lot of the neighborhoods in your area, your district, District Number Two, have those poles, and we just can't mount them.
Yeah, I remember that.
So that, that was, that was really a, a big hindrance in, in District Two. And that won't close.
What's the lifetime lifespan for, for these?
We're hoping the, the, the life expectancy of the Wi-Fi, we're, we're at our fifth year, we're hoping that it's going to go to seven or eight, we're going to try and push it. So life, life expectancy, it's out in the sun, they're getting beat up every day, the equipment is, so we're really hoping, you know, one is just the, the equipment surviving the, the abuse of the elements, two, the, the devices are at some point, and they're probably in, you know, the next couple of years, are getting behind on technology as new iPhones, new technology comes out, you know, these, these devices are not going to be backwards compatible. Take, taking the Wi-Fi a step further, not only, you know, once we were completely deployed with Wi-Fi, we took it a step further and said, okay, how do we better utilize our assets? And we worked with traffic, with Marlin's team, and we deployed, utilized our, our Wi-Fi to be able to deploy to the traffic intersections where we didn't have fiber, and it was going to cost millions of dollars to try and run fiber to those intersections. So we were able to expand and deploy 112 additional traffic cabinets that allows us, you know, with those 112, we were able to deploy 38 cameras, with, each camera has four views, so it's like deploying 112 cameras. You know, traffic is using the Wi-Fi connectivity at those cabinets for remote management, for alerts, PD uses it for video surveillance for investigations, emergency manage, management uses it during natural disasters, that they can actually see the camera, see if there's a flood at that intersection, so it's a huge, huge help getting these, these cabinets on Wi-Fi. Here's a little map, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see every pin, yellow pin is a traffic cabinet that is connected on the Wi-Fi, there's 112 of them all throughout the city, majority of them are probably down the center, because can't get fiber up, up or down 10th Street or 23rd Street, so. Moving forward, five years today, usage in 2021, you'll see there, that was the height of COVID, that, that, that update was around six months after October, when we went live in 2020, that was probably the height of COVID, schools weren't, if they did start allowing kids to come back, it was very limited. We had about, about 13,500 devices that were connecting daily back in 2020, 2021, or early 2021. back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, or early twenty twenty-one. Moving forward to today, five years, as of today, times have changed. We, we have about fourteen hundred people or devices, I should say, daily, anywhere from fourteen to sixteen hundred a day connecting that are utilizing it.
And, and Robert, just to clarify, that a device could be anything from a computer to a cell phone?
Computer, cell phone, smart TV, iPad, tablet.
Average, average connection duration, is that in minutes?
Those are hours.
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 Four hours or one and a half hours.
Yeah. And the one and a half was a best, it was kind of a best guess. It was anywhere from one to three hours connection. But majority of them, it seemed to be about one and a half.
So they're using another service? They're using another service or what?
Well, times change. Kids are back in school a hundred percent of the time. There's no more remote learning. Adults are back at work. It has transitioned from educational, was the highest demand back then. Now it's kind of morphed into social media, video streaming, education as well. But, but education is not at the top anymore because a lot of those kids are back in school.
I was gonna say you.
I am probably the worst at this, okay? So how do I read this? Our investment, how do I read, in order for me to have a judgment, you know, how much more do we invest?
What's the threshold of active devices to make this a worthwhile-
Thank you.
-annual investment, right?
Excellent.
An annual investment that's growing, that's costing more and more.
I, I think that's the question for you guys to tell us.
That's why I'm asking because I, I want to make it a four.
You know, when, when this started at the height of the pandemic and, and the intent was to provide, make sure that the students living in McAllen had access to education, it was, it was a very easy number to budget. It was something that had to be done. In twenty twenty-five, kids are back at school and if our observations are that, for the most part, the limited number of people using the service are using it for social purposes, the question is, is now at three hundred, and Robert will get to the slide in a minute, but at, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to operate, is that where, is that where we want to put those, those dollars annually?
Year-to-date, three fifty.
Year, year-to-date.
Yeah, year-to-date. We have one more quarter, so it's going to pretty much be very similar to twenty twenty-four. You're, you're talking about the-
Yeah, go back to the, the uptime. The only question I have, because another reason maybe people don't connect is the reliability of the system, right? And I know we say uptime, internet accessible on seven water towers. Well, the water towers are connected to fiber.
So the, the water towers are, are probably, they shoot the, the signal out.
They shoot the signal out, but what really matters is the active devices.
At each pole.
At each pole.
At each pole.
That's a better measure than uptime, right? Because the, the, the water towers are almost always going to be up as connected to fiber. So, you know, the number of devices to sort of total deployed versus active is going to be a better measure. Is this working, right? Because if, if you're deploying a thousand devices and four hundred are always down, people are trying to log on. I saw on one of these slides, you know, five weeks for an equipment failure. If I try to log on two, three days in a row and it doesn't work, I'm not going to remember six weeks later to try it again, right? So I, I wonder if we lose, if we're losing.
Well, and, and maybe that, that was a poor choice. That, that, that is the, the equipment, the very large equipment that's on the, on the water towers.
The larger, more-
Yeah. And, and what we did to offset that is we actually have spare parts. We just have to get someone, hire a, a water tower climber, someone to climb up there, swap it out. That alone just takes a week, two weeks minimum. So that's why we were averaging about five weeks, depending if we have to order. Now, the, the equipment on the poles, we always have inventory on hand to quickly swap those out. The vendor will go out and you get, we-
Those are more run-of-the-mill devices.
Yeah. Yeah, they have the bucket trucks to get out there. They go up there, swap it out, a little access point or majority of the time, the, the failure devices or, or power usually, the photocell burns out and we have to go swap it out. So, yeah, a average, average ticket is usually resolved in one to three days, you know, if it's a pole related. It's just the bigger equipment.
And we, we get back to that citizen that has been resolved? Or do we just fix it and move on? I mean-
I, I'd have to say we probably just fix it and move on.
Okay.
Did we not just approve a contract with a vendor to-
Yes, I think that's what's-
Continued maintenance, that's what.
Yeah, the continued maintenance. Yes, yes.
And so what, what accountability standards do they hold to as far as, I know here we have some general average ticket days, diagnose and repair, but how do we hold them accountable? Because I know you're getting to the slide and we keep jumping ahead of you, but the labor maintenance just continues to skyrocket, right? And so how is the contract tied to this labor maintenance? It seems we're paying, obviously, there's got to be a lot of repairs or fixes needed, right? Or continual replacement. We're charging the labor for a reason and we're doing it for fourteen hundred people, hopefully not just playing video games, right? I mean, it's a heavy cost.
Yeah. What we're doing, one, C B R S is, is the hosted solution that we use to monitor and track the devices. We get notified as soon as they're down.
Okay.
We log them in. We do about, there's about seventy-five pole outages per quarter. So that averages out based on current, it, it comes out to about six hundred and thirty dollars per pole per quarter to, to maintain. I, I can tell you, I don't have the stats on exact, you know, response time. Are they there within thirty minutes? But we've had very good luck so far with, with teleprograting out there and, and responding quickly.
Do they submit, do you all submit like troubled tickets?
Uh, yes. Yeah, well, no, they, they, we do both. They, they actually have logins and the hosted software sends them an alert notifying that this one's not responsive, it's down. So they, they get an alert from the system itself and we get the same alert and then we kind of-
So the system itself should be logging response time, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's all kind of self-managed, it should be able to generate reports to show that either the response time is staying stable or is it getting worse or getting, you know?
Yeah.
There's got to be a way that we can continually measure them.
Yeah. And the response time for a short amount of time, and I think I mentioned that we had some minor issues with the vendor. It wasn't really so much with the vendor is we, now that the equipment was starting, is aging, it was starting to fail more from getting beat up with the sun and the elements. So we had to go and buy more inventory, hands-on inventory, so it's really quick, swap it out faster. Because the vendor was getting out there and they're like, well, we can't fix it. We don't have the equipment. So the spare parts. So we had, and we're providing the parts for them. So we, we, we resolved that and uptime is, you know, the response time is, is, is pretty quick. So, so going back to your, your question, I mean, other than the fourteen hundred people, keep in mind, you know-
Well, the traffic.
The, the traffic cameras is, is monumental for having those online. P D uses them for investigation or surveillances for accidents. I think that alone is probably well worth it. But, you know, that's my opinion. You can see that now, you know, with the equipment failures, at the bottom, equipment failure is, you know, we bought extra spare parts because they are failing. We, we, we hope to keep the system up and running for a couple more years. That'll give it a, a life cycle of, of seven years, life expectancy. Questions so far?
Sir, with this proposal that you have here, are you expecting to expand your coverage?
As of right now? No, no.
Or just keep it the way it is?
Yeah, because if we were to expand it, we'd have to use the same, same equipment, which is already five-year-old outdated equipment. I don't, I don't think it'd be feasible to turn, turn around and expand on the same equipment. It's, I think we'd kind of need to have to do a forklift approach because you got to climb the water towers, replace that equipment that starts the signal and pushes it out, and then go replace all the thousand, two, two hundred and some poles.
So you're thinking, let's say two years, three years, there might be sort of a refresh proposal that might include an entirely, you know, a large kind of capital investment?
Yes, sir.
And at that point, you could look at expansion because you could tie all the equipment in together.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
And if, if there are research, new ways of doing it, maybe, maybe there's a new way of doing this.
But I do think, since, since we, we had done this in twenty, late twenty, obviously twenty-one, I believe, I think a update report like this annually would be good to maintain.
Happy to do it. Robert, we'll see you back here.
Thank you, Robert. Thank, thank you, thank you.
We'll be here.
Mayor Protem, I'm supporting your deal. I would love to be discussing executive session.
Recommend that we recess.
Yeah. This time I recommend we recess to executive session. You got a second?
No.
No, right?
You can recess.
Oh, he's being low.
You can recess.
Yeah.
Workshops are held every second and fourth Monday of the month, convening at four P M at the McAllen City Commission Chamber on the third floor at McAllen City Hall.